Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Andrea Keen. I'm Chair of the Wayzetta School Board. I call to order the Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education Emergency Meeting for November 11th, 2020. This meeting is open for public viewing, live streamed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/wayzettapublicschools/live. The recording of this meeting will also be available on the Wayzetta Public Schools website by checking first clicking on District and then clicking on School Board. On Friday, March 13th, 2020, Governor Walz issued Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Before we begin, I'll go through a couple of reminders for our Zoom participants. Please identify yourself when speaking. If you have background noise, please mute your microphone when listening. Please do not make use of the chat feature as this is a public recorded meeting. In an attempt to ensure all voices are heard, each board member will be called upon for our action item this evening. Feel free to pass if you don't have a question or a comment. I doubt that will happen. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Sheriff Posey.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Anita Lucky here. C. Ann Falconer.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here. All right. Thanks, Bo Media, and thanks, everyone, for making time for this meeting tonight with such late notice. I really appreciate you all being here. We only have one agenda item this evening, and that is our COVID-19 update and learning model changes. So at this time, I would like to hand it over to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and members of our staff and leadership team that have joined in here tonight. Thank you for joining us here for this special board meeting tonight. Chair Keen outlined that we have a single agenda item tonight and relates to our current learning plans and leading up to a recommendation to make a change with those learning plans. I'm going to share my screen and pull up a document. Is the document visible? I saw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. So this is a document that we put together that outlines this particular recommendation. So as the board knows and members of our leadership team, we've been very deeply engaged with the ongoing developments related to COVID-19 and how it impacts schools and learning plans and frankly, everything else related. And the document that I'm going to work through, I'm not going to read this word for word, but we'll just kind of highlight the different sections and point out some things that I think will be important for the school board and the staff and viewers to know in regard to our current circumstances. So this first paragraph just really outlines some of the background that on June 18th, we received a direction from the state of Minnesota, from the governor, MDE and MDH, to develop learning plans in response to the predicted changes in COVID-19 development within the state and around the country and for us to develop three different learning models, one being in-person learning, the second being hybrid learning, and the third being distance learning. So the development of these plans were to be utilized and available and continuously reviewed and updated as needed along the way for implementation in response to the changing conditions related to this changing set of circumstances with COVID-19. So the departments outlined a five-step process for determining a starting learning model for the 2021 school year and a process for making changes to those learning plans during the year's conditions warranted. So determination of learning models is guided by these parameters that were established by MDH. And I use the term guided because they are one of the parameters that we use. And there are a number of variety of different things that we focus on as we consider learning plans. But this has really become the most well-known one and one that is utilized and referenced frequently, not only within our district but around the state and with their parents as well. And the different levels of learning models are outlined by the number of cases on the left. And again, this is a number that you've likely been tracking. I know you've all been tracking along the way. At the August 10th, 2020 School Board Meeting, the board unanimously approved of the recommended action to approve the resolution outlining flexible guidelines for Wayzetta Public Schools and to authorize the superintendent and designees to adapt these scenarios as needed to meet the requirements and to best meet the needs of students, families, and staff in an ever-changing pandemic climate. So the resolution authorized the following, that based on the Minnesota Department of Health parameters, that we would start the school year on hybrid learning model. So as you reflect back in August, at this board meeting, we presented the different learning models and the recommendation to move forward with hybrid learning. And we've been in that model since the beginning of the school year with the understanding that, you know, we knew that somewhere along the way, it would be very likely that we change. And even though we're recommending a change to a more restrictive model tonight, it's very possible that during the course of the year, we'll be making a recommendation. And we hope this will be the case to move back to less restrictive models. And of course, on the evolving circumstances around this. The school board also authorized me as the superintendent to make necessary changes to the learning models during the year according to the following section. So I was authorized as the superintendent after consultation with the school board chair and notification of the school board to select and implement a different learning model for the district or any specific school buildings without formal school board action if reasonably believed that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations rendered impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and district staff, public health officials deem it in the best interest of the school district to implement a different learning model. So that essentially authorized me as the superintendent to make changes to the learning plan. As you know, we brought this to the board on Monday night and I gave a pretty comprehensive presentation in regard to the current status, offered a number of different slides that had data points from the Minnesota Department of Health and made some preliminary recommendations, which you will find are in alignment with this particular document. I also wanted to share that on Tuesday of this week, our Incident Command Team, which is our group that meets every, well, twice a month, alternating weeks to discuss our current learning model, safety protocols, and the status of COVID-19 in the school district, as well as giving consideration to Hennepin County and the larger state, just really to bring the group together, find out how things are going within the school district and also in our surrounding communities. At this particular meeting, we had members from our regional support team, which includes representatives from Metro Exu, the person who is the coordinator, is an employee of Metro Exu, the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health. So those are the organizations that are represented in our regional support team. At this meeting, we shared information with members of the team about our current learning models, the conditions within the school district, and our thoughts about moving forward with changes to our learning models. And in turn, they shared from the regional support team what they're seeing in Hennepin County and across the state. So their guidance and assistance was very helpful. They also indicated that there's a rising number of cases in Hennepin County, which I'll share some data here with you in a little bit. And that's also being observed and documented with information about our school or our cities that comprise our school district. The MDH parameters used for Hennepin County are also used to assess the status of viral spread in the local communities. And in recent weeks, a number of cases in Hennepin County and those cities, which comprise the school district that are found all or in part within the footprint of the school district. And then a number of surrounding communities have been increasing significantly during that timeframe. And I'll show a graphic in a moment that outlines data for the cities within the footprint of the school district. And the way this works is if it's a community of more than 10,000 residents, they kind of get their own number. And then there's also some communities that are smaller, that they've lumped together, a northwest suburban area and then a south and west suburban area. And we take into consideration those numbers as well. So the Hennepin County number that was calculated and communicated on November 10th. So there's two sets of numbers. They're really the same set of numbers. But Thursday is the day when the document from MDH comes out and Hennepin County posts a similar document using the same formula with the same information a couple of days earlier. And or actually, there's the data is more recent actually from this set of information that I'm sharing with you tonight. But what was shared through November 2nd and that was provided to our director or supervisor of Health Services, Don Wilson, was came out yesterday and that number was at 57.6. So board members and others will probably recall that our number last Thursday was 34. So within about a week's time, this has climbed significantly by about 20 points. So healthcare professionals and those using projection instruments are suggesting that this number is likely to increase significantly again in the coming weeks. So I wanted to share these data points with you just to give you a visual. So this is a time period over the last six weeks. That top number in the yellow highlighted column is the most recent set of data. The top line or row for Hennepin County. And this number will be a little bit different than what comes out tomorrow. This one tends to be a little bit higher probably than what will come out tomorrow. So it'll probably be, I'm guessing, two, three, four points less than this particular number. Maple Grove had quite an increase. We have a relatively small portion of Maple Grove in the school district. And that number has grown significantly. Minnetoka, again, we have part of that community within our school district a little bit lower. Plymouth went up to that mark of 51.8. And then this combination of other northwest suburban cities, and you can see I've highlighted down below, that particular grouping includes Corcoran and Medicine Lake. And the west-south suburban conglomeration includes Medina and Wayzetta. So and the other ones are, you know, communities that are somewhat adjacent to or relatively close to our community. So the way I've been tracking this is including our cities that comprise our school district and taking a look at those clusters of suburban areas. I also wanted to share this information from our website. Viewers will likely recall that on October 14th, we started posting local information. And we updated this again today. And we have, you can see that the weekly district-wide student and staff positive cases, and these are weekly counts, have been on an incline here in the past four weeks. And you can see the trend line indicating an upward movement with that. Weekly number of students and staff in quarantine, again, upward movement with the trend lines there. And then our total number of cases that we've been tracking since, well, since September 14th, which was our first day of school this year. So given this information, and again, this I think is, you know, more specific and local, but also I'm sure the viewers have been hearing and reading about the significant changes in the viral spread and how it's accelerating, not only in Minnesota, but the upper Midwest right now is kind of at that point where a number of other states have been in the past. But we seem to be kind of on this front end of an upward spike. And given that information, the reason for calling the board meeting, even though we had a meeting on Monday and I presented a significant amount of information and provided an opportunity for the board to help us shape the recommendation. We, you know, are moving forward with pretty much what was suggested or recommended on Monday night, that the following learning models be implemented in the school district effective on Monday, November 30th. And at the high school, the recommendation would be to pretty much remain in the current modified hybrid learning plan.
Hi, Dr. Anderson. I'm sorry. Can I interrupt you for just a moment? It looks like our live stream paused. We have a small glitch. If you could just give us about 30 seconds, we should be able to restart the live stream and get our viewers back.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Sure, no worries.
Stretch break.
Okay, just a little update. It looks like YouTube itself, the entire website crashed. So we are going to switch this to a Facebook live stream for our viewers. So maybe another 30 seconds and we'll be good to go.
All right. I'll stand by Ashley until I hear from you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, thank you for your patience. We are live on Facebook now and we can resume the meeting. So thank you.
All right. Ashley, I have a question. Any idea where, how far back I should go?
I would say if you could go back about just a minute, that was about where we were before it crashed.
All right. Well, maybe I'll just pick up here just to be sure that the information on the charts was made available for our viewers. I apologize for the technical difficulties. It's part of the reality of the technological world that we live in now. I guess we're so dependent upon the systems that help us continue to do our work. But sometimes we have a couple of setbacks. But anyway, thanks, Ashley, for helping to get us back live here. So this was a chart. I apologize if I've already covered this and viewers have already seen this. But I'll just kind of give it a quick overview. This is six weeks of data for the cities that comprise our school district as well as two other clustered groups of cities that are adjacent or maybe in part within our school district. You can see in the yellow column from the week prior, the numbers in Hennepin County have gone up significantly, about 20 points, pretty big spike in Maple Grove. Minnetoka went up significantly. Plymouth has gone up significantly as well. And the combination of these other northwest suburban communities and the west-south suburban communities that are somewhat adjacent to our school district are listed there as well. So in that northwest conglomeration, that includes the communities of Corcoran and Medicine Lake. And then in the west-south is Medina and Wayzetta. So I include those not because they're necessarily within our district, all of those cities. And most of them aren't, but they're relatively close by and adjacent and supplemental information that I think can be helpful. We've also updated our, on our website dashboard. And typically Wednesdays are the days that we update that. So we've been adding information over the last four weeks with this. So the first line shows the weekly district-wide new students and staff positive cases. And you can see week by week that there's been an increase with trend lines working upward, weekly number of students and staff in quarantine, again, increasing during that time. And then just a running total of the number of cases that we've had over since September 14th. So that was the first day of school. So you can see the running total during the course of the school year. So you'll recall, board members, that on Monday of this week, I gave a presentation with a number of slides with background information and preparation for a meeting that we thought would be a little bit further out in the week. But we moved it up to tonight in order to present this information and get your authorization for us to continue planning in the direction that we're going. And we're making the recommendation to implement a different set of learning models effective on Monday, November 30th. And again, this is in response to the fact that we're seeing increasing numbers, not only around the state, but in the metro and Hennepin County and right here within our school district and our schools. So the recommended action will be tonight for the high school to pretty much remain in its current modified hybrid learning plan or model. And our high school principal, Scott Gengler, will work closely with his leadership team and staff to make modifications to that plan as necessary. But currently, the plan that's in place likely can stay intact for the most part moving forward. But he'll be working with his team to be making decisions around that. Our middle schools currently are in the hybrid learning plan. A recommendation is to move to a distance learning plan. And for the elementary schools to move from hybrid to distance. And the same for our early learning school. So the number that I shared with you that I think is going to get confirmed tomorrow to be pretty, pretty close to that 57. As the viewers are likely aware that when those numbers go beyond 50 and the elementary schools are in a hybrid model, the school district is then in a position to give consideration to moving into a more restrictive or distance learning model for that. Now, if I thought that maybe next week it was going to be back down below 50 or working its way back toward a lower level, we probably would have given additional consideration to elementary. But I haven't come across any source yet that is predicting that this number is going to go down. In fact, you know, I hate to get too predictive a week out, but the projections are that it will continue to increase and at a rate that would not suggest that it's going to be coming back down below that 50 mark any time in the coming weeks. I also wanted to mention that our Special Services Department will work directly with the families of children being served by the Special Education Department and those receiving English learner services to communicate how educational services will be delivered to students. And also, it's further recommended that on Monday, November 23rd and Tuesday, November 24th, that's the week of Thanksgiving. So Wednesday is already a non-student, non-staff day. Thursday, of course, is Thanksgiving and Friday is a Thanksgiving holiday. We thought it made sense to have these two days in accordance with the governor's guidance, one of his executive orders that when districts make changes to their learning plan, they can designate some planning days to ensure staff are ready to implement the new model. And we'll be working on this, obviously, while we have been already. But we'll continue to work on the development of these new distance learning plans for elementary and middle school. You know, in addition to these two days, all the days between now and then, our leadership team will be working with principals and staff to refine and help craft that plan. So I won't read that whole section from the executive order, but that's really the, the part of that executive order that outlines that professional development allowance by the state. So one thing I'll mention also that some viewers may already know about, but we did make the decision today to move to distance learning at Central Middle School starting Monday of next week. And the reason for that is, is there have been a number of cases there, positive tests, as well as a number of students out on quarantine and a number of staff out on quarantine or just generally absent from the building. And it's very difficult for us to provide a staffing model that works at Central Middle School. So we did make that decision today. That's part of the authorization that the board provided to me as the superintendent back in August when we implemented the plan to make decisions. Because sometimes we don't always have the benefit of a significant amount of time. And we felt that this was the appropriate action to take today. And board members, you were informed of that earlier. But I just wanted to mention that here as well, as some of our viewers may have already received an email from the principal at Central Middle School. So at this time, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you. I've put the recommended action here on my screen and I'll turn it over to you from this point. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share the recommendation and provide a little bit of the background and rationale for why we are recommending moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. The information that you've presented to us reflects the data and the expertise of our Incident Command Team as well as the feedback that was provided to you by the school board on Monday night. Since Monday night, the school board has received a great deal of feedback from district parents, from district teachers, really from all district stakeholders. And I think as we move forward and get to the discussion portion of our vote, that feedback will be reflected in the questions and comments of the school board. So I will read the recommended action to approve the following learning models for implementation effective on Monday, November 30th, 2020. Wayzetta High School will remain in its current modified hybrid learning plan. Wayzetta Middle Schools move from hybrid learning to distance learning, with the exception of Central Middle School, as just described by Dr. Anderson. Wayzetta Elementary Schools move from hybrid learning to distance learning. And Wayzetta Early Learning School moves from hybrid learning to distance learning. It's further recommended that the board approve two professional development dates, Monday, November 23rd and Tuesday, November 24th, which will be used for elementary and middle school professional planning in preparation for these learning model changes at the elementary school and middle school levels. Additionally, the superintendent is hereby authorized, after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board, to select and implement and notification to the school board, to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school buildings without formal school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
Lynda Cohen, I shall move. I need a second.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded. We'll move forward to discussion so that board members have the opportunity to share their thoughts and ask further questions. We'll start with Dr. Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Keen. As most of you know, I'm pretty reluctant to move our youngest learners to distance learning. And yet I feel for the safety of the students and the safety of our staff and so on, that it's important to do. I just hope that the district administration, et cetera, will be very aware if there are any opportunities to bring some of our youngest learners back. I think that would be really important. The second thing that I've been thinking about a lot is about our COVID numbers going up and the whether or not when we go to distance learning, it's appropriate to have some of the teachers work at home, some work in the buildings or, and to give teachers as much as possible a choice. I realize that has all sorts of complications because some teachers won't have a choice. On the other hand, it's my firm belief that people do better when they feel that they have some control over what's happening in their life and recognizing that working at home is something that can help the COVID pandemic. So I just urge the administration to think about what is the best avenue and requirements for our teachers. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Lynda. Any questions or comments from Cian Belkner?
Thank you, Chair Keen. Of the proposal that's put forth, I'm in agreement that the middle school numbers seem to put us in a place where we have to shift that learning model. Additionally, in the proposal, I defer to the leadership who know what our teachers need for additional preparation towards shifting the learning model. But now I have two questions. All right. The number of COVID cases at the elementary levels, per the district's tracker, is less than five of combined teachers and students being out with COVID at each school, just on the elementary level. But to protect HIPAA, we don't even know if there were any positive cases at any of those schools because the numbers were so few. There's an exception of one school, one elementary, and that was just this week. There were more quarantines than that, but some schools like Birchview and Oakwood, there were only six and one quarantines respectively. And to date, Oakwood only has one quarantine to date. Our elementary schools don't seem to be big spreading centers to either students or to teachers, which is demonstrated, and the data I'm taking from this is in the objective data in the district's tracker. My question is, then, why are we closing the elementary buildings and moving all the elementary learners to distance? I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of the elementary parents who have reached out to me and frankly, as a parent of elementary students who have been distance. And those two days have been absolutely sacrosanct to my kids and to a lot of their friends and to kids throughout the district. And the second part of my question, sorry, this is a long one. I didn't know where to break it. So, or if you want to be very cautious, then why not move to a more restrictive model at specific elementary schools that are having outbreaks or significant quarantining? As opposed to moving all of the elementaries to distance at once? The scalpel approach, which has been brought up in a couple of different MDH calls, may not be adopted by a lot of other districts. We're not seeing it. But my question is, aren't we Wayzata, known for our excellence and innovation? And that was underscored to me by a few moms this afternoon. That's the end of that question.
All right. Well, I'll try to remember the subcomponent parts of that. If I miss one, feel free to remind.
There's an essay. Yeah.
Yes, well, thank you for the question and good questions, and I appreciate that. I'm going to start with, you know, why move elementaries now? And then maybe I'll defer to Dawn Wilson, who's our supervisor of health services, who's on the meeting here tonight as well in regard to more of the specifics about the buildings and number of cases and spreading, and let her share the health perspective. I shared the numbers with you for Hennepin County and the cities that include the Wayzata School District. And I think it was clear on the graphic that I shared that those numbers are accelerating at a pretty rapid rate over a one-week period. And as I indicated, if I had reason to believe based on all the information that's out there that is available, that this number was going to make a U-turn and start going down, I think it would be worthy of letting it plateau for a week or two and then seeing it come down and then move back or stay within that model and continue to monitor. Based on what I'm hearing, and I think the good majority of our team on the call or on the meeting, as well as viewers in hearing all the information that's out there in the media and the data that's being presented and the cautions and concerns that are coming from the health personnel around the state, I don't look for these numbers to drop anytime soon. In fact, as I indicated, I'm anticipating that a week from now on Thursday, the number will have gone up again in another significant increment. There are some counties that were, I didn't include it in the packet because it just would have been distracting information, but communities not too far from the metro area that are at that 140, 150. I think the highest number I've seen, and it was several weeks ago, was about 170. We currently have that number of 57 or last week 34. Some counties are very high level. So I'm not suggesting that that's where we're headed, but I think we're going to see probably a number of weeks coming where those numbers are going to go up significantly. So what I would hope is that we can, you know, continue to monitor the numbers, continue to monitor what's happening and see what winter break brings and, you know, take a look at what's happening after break in January and work toward and hopefully get back to having our students returning to the building. One of the things that's helpful when we meet with our regional support team is that they do have experts who monitor, you know, the changing conditions in our area and around the state. And when we shared our plan with them, they felt that it was very consistent. And one of the things that they mentioned, and in fact, we, I'm glad they mentioned it because it got us thinking in a different way about the fact that, given what they knew of the growing numbers, they indicated you may want to have a plan just to be ready to pivot more quickly in some of your buildings in the event that you need to. So I think that from my perspective and why I'm comfortable bringing this recommendation to you as board members tonight is I'm anticipating that this number is going to continue to go up. And it's based on what I'm hearing from experts that are studying this and who have a good feel for it. So, but it is our hope. It's heartbreaking to be in the situation we're in for schools, not only here, but everywhere. And to be in a position where, you know, we aren't able to have all of our kids in school. But we all want that. We're all going to keep working hard to get toward that within the parameters and the guidance that are safe to do so. But I would like to maybe just call on Dawn, if she's available, and she is, I see her now. Hello, Dawn, to just share a little bit more maybe about the process for how we go about the tracing and decision-making in regard to individual buildings. And from a health perspective, perhaps, some of the concepts or thoughts that are important for us to keep in mind in addition to just the numbers. So Dawn, if you would.
Yes, thank you. This is Dawn Wilson, the supervisor of health services and licensed school nurses across the district. When we become aware of somebody who has tested positive, what we do is we conduct an investigation in concert with the Minnesota Department of Health. And we determine who it would be a close contact. And so then they would go into quarantine. And right now, all of our sites have individuals who are in quarantine. And what the Department of Health has stated is that they are, they anticipate that we will continue to see the numbers in response to the Halloween gatherings. And they fully anticipate that moving forward, the numbers are likely to continue to increase because of gatherings over the Thanksgiving holiday and over the winter break. And they are anticipating that this is a trajectory that unfortunately, we can expect to have more implications. And staffing is also something that we are looking at in conjunction. So it's not just these numbers. We are only reporting, I'm looking at the website right now. And what we are reporting are only those that are over five in a building. And so the, you know, each, each building has had cases. And what we are reporting and because we, what we are doing, the reason we are doing that is regarding confidentiality, we do not want to have any possibility of identifying somebody who might have tested positive. Are there any questions?
Dawn, one question I have is the reporting process, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that consistent with how MDH is reporting?
What MDH has requested that we complete what's called a red cap survey. And that's for anybody who was determined to be in our buildings during their infectious period of time. And so what that means is sometimes we can identify somebody who was positive and they still are positive and they still would have close contacts, but their infectious period, they were not in our building. So that's why these numbers may look different from what is placed on the Minnesota Department of Health dashboard.
Thank you, Dawn.
All right. Cian, did you have another question?
I did. Apologies. I swear it's the only other one.
That's okay.
Another one for Superintendent Anderson. Fewer subparts. Okay. This is also echoing Director Cohen's comment, but mine's in more of a question. Once the school goes to full distance, can we revisit the decision for those teachers to have an option or flexibility to do their work in teaching from home if they so choose? Acknowledging the teacher's professionalism, preparedness, and personal responsibility, I wonder if we could extend them further grace by offering them this flexibility in cases where their school is closed and has gone to full distance?
I think to start with that question, I might defer to my colleague Stacy Boss, our executive director of human resources, who I know has worked closely with staff and principals and conversations relating to that. I've heard both school board members who have offered insights or posed questions tonight bring this up. So it's certainly a topic of interest and one that I know that you have heard some inputs on as shared earlier by Lynda, as well as we have also. So I'll turn it over to Stacy and give her an opportunity to share some perspectives in that regard. Stacy, if you would.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a great question and I appreciate your interest in how we are working together with our teachers as we move into distance learning. And as you know, as we're doing this, we're working frantically to put into place all of the pieces to support our students as we move into this transition. And we probably haven't had all of the necessary time to have all of the detailed, one-on-one, case-by-case basis conversations with our teachers that are concerned. So I just want to reassure everybody that just because we are working really hard to provide some consistency for our teachers, because as you know, distance learning this year is different than how it looked last year. We are still going to have the majority of our staff. We're still going to have lots of students on site. High school, their modified hybrid, we'll still have all of their teachers on site. And so we're just really trying to have a good sense of fairness and equity. And as we make decisions about who works from home, we have to kind of engage in some conversations with our teachers as to why they need that accommodation. And we hear the daycare concerns. We want to support teachers in that situation. Cory and I have been talking about how we do that. We just haven't had time to get to everything. I think we've all been working frantically. We've been trying to get the school situations, the instructional models and all of those pieces and not making excuses because we do want to reassure our teachers that we're, we have their best interests in mind as well. But right now, we're just doing everything we can to facilitate that transition and to facilitate that transition and to keep school as normal as we can for students. I think that sometimes we forget how hard this is going to be for our students and our teachers alike. And always trying to find that balance is a challenge. And the leadership in the district believes that our teachers are going to need a lot of support as we move into, you know, more synchronous learning. Right now, we're doing every other day. As we move into distance learning, I anticipate our parents are going to expect instruction from our teachers on a daily basis. And how do we provide that support to our teachers in the best way? How do we make sure that all of our teachers have the internet to address the students that need that connection to them desperately? How do we make sure that they have the materials? And how do we protect their mental health? You know, transitioning into working from home, we hear so much about how people need interactions and how the only way that we're going to get through the school year is by supporting each other. And so those are all the reasons as to why we're trying to help teachers understand why we want them on site. And I have to say, I know that you hear from those that want to work from home and we're going to work with them and help them. But we also have a lot of teachers that are happy to be on site and who feel the comfort of being able to have their whiteboard and to have their materials and to bring to their students that sense of normalcy because they see their teacher in their classroom. Even though our students can't be with us, it's nice to know their teacher is in their classroom taking care of things and providing them the support and the relationships that they need. So I know that was a really long response, but I just want you to know that those teachers that are reaching out to you, have them reach out to HR, have them reach out to Cory, their union president. We're here to help them and we will figure out ways to do that. So, thank you. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. We're just, we really want to help teachers get through this and we will get through this. That's the Wayzata way. And we will get this figured out. Just have a little patience. We will get there. So, thank you. And if you have any other questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right. Thank you, Cian. Next questions or comments from Sarah Johansson?
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Anderson and our esteemed Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Anderson and our esteemed administrators. I feel like it's a, tonight's a that's good, that's bad moment. I am so grateful that as of Friday, we will have, we will have made it through one quarter of a four-quarter year. That, that feels like a really good statement. At the same time, we're in the business of bringing kids to school and keeping them there, not telling them that they can't come. And so for that, I am deeply saddened by the need for this meeting. And I know it's reverberating in many households tonight as it is in mine. So I have a couple of, I have three total that I want to ask, actually two are questions and one's a comment. Some of them are going to sound familiar because I keep bringing them up. But I keep, well, so that my first question, so Dr. Anderson, do you want all three at once and you want to pick your order or do you want me to go one at a time?
About one at a time.
Okay, so I'm thinking of a how and right now, a how question. And just as Ms. Voss told us that there's been a lot of focus on changing the model and thinking about students. I, I am, I know that you don't have all of the answers yet, but I'm wondering if you or any member of your administration could give us just a little insight of how is this A B thing going to work with our students? So, you know, like questions like, is my child going to see their friend that's in the B group in their fourth grade classroom now that they're both a distance? Or is it going to look like the distance choice where the A kids and the B kids are still the same? Any sort of thoughts about what that how looks like? Absolutely knowing that that is still to be fleshed out a bit. We're doing this quick. We didn't anticipate the elementary so fast.
Right. Thank you for that question. And I'll maybe start with that and then turn it over to Dr. Johnson and Mr. Lutz, who are both on the call tonight from our Teaching and Learning Department. We met today with principals as a large group for, I don't know, 20 minutes or so, and then they broke off by level. So we had elementary and middle and high school that broke off and had more conversations about how to move forward and consider ways to implement the new model. And you're right, there are a number of loose ends with this yet. And even though we've been talking about this and working on the development of what a distance learning plan would look like. The fine tuning and putting some of the key variables in place as we move forward are still in process. So about the meeting today, I sat in on the elementary principals meeting and there was some great discussion. I know there's at least one follow-up meeting scheduled with principals where we'll continue to reflect on what have we learned this fall? What do we recall from last spring? What have our distance choice teachers learned in their implementation this year with their students who are involved in distance learning each day of the week? And how do we move forward with the best possible learning model implementation that will provide a great experience for our students? And finding that sweet spot of the appropriate amount of interaction and engagement between teachers and their peers and the direct contact. And that was a big part of our discussion today. So I think that's still evolving. As I indicated, we have a couple of days earmarked already now in November that week of Thanksgiving for more planning and there will be, I don't know, I'm sure several meetings between now and the end of next week as well. As we continue to prepare moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over either to Dr. Johnson or Mr. Lutz. The two of you can decide who wants to lead off or start. But it looks like Dr. Johnson's ready, so I'll turn it over to her.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Madam Chair, members of the board, Director Johansson, thank you for your question. We have been working very hard and diligently for a considerable amount of time on a potential transition to a different learning program. We have a weekly teaching and learning meeting. We track the COVID numbers with quite a bit of detail. And we've had this on our radar screen for quite some time. With that said, you know, until it's reality, the planning, it feels different when it becomes more real. And so we have tried to stay true to our principles that have guided our work since we, we started this really back in March and then throughout the summer, which is to just provide a consistent and predictable learning experience for children and for the teachers and for their families. Knowing that there's many, many moving parts to this and the more consistency we can provide certainly early in the process, the, the more predictable it is for parents and the more manageable it is for everyone. And so we've given considerable thought to what might the learning program look like? And how different or how similar do we want it to be to what we're currently doing? And we think starting out more similar is better for our students and for our families and for the teachers than going to some kind of wholesale change right out of the, out of the gate. So with that, I'm going to ask my colleague Dave Lutz, who has really done a tremendous job and just been boots on the ground from day one on this project. And so Dave, if you can maybe add a little more specifics, if you'd like.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Your question, Director Johansson, is one that we were working on all day today. Not that we, we haven't planned extensively up to this point, but I think it's, it's, once we know this transition's coming. It really benefits us to take a moment and pause and learn from, you know, what did we learn last spring? You know, and, and, and things have evolved quite a bit since then to this fall. What have we learned across our different levels and in our different models, right? And what are the best practices that we can isolate within those models? Your specific question about, you know, how often would groups merge or there going to be opportunities for that? That's a question that we're still working on and I don't want to get out in front of our process, right? So the, the process on that is we're collecting feedback from our teachers, our principals, we're working with individuals in both miles to collect feedback. I was with teachers today in distance choice classrooms this week, just doing as much data collection as we can and gathering feedback so that we can put forth a plan. And really, really enhance our, our plan to deliver on what we feel like is the best experience for students. We have done a ton of work up to this point. On, at the elementary level particularly, I think that's what your question is referring most to. But on, on curriculum mapping and designing our instruction around this hybrid model. And so how do we keep that great work? And ensure that it supports us through this transition while engaging in some new opportunities that, that quite honestly are presented now that we would be in a distance learning for all environment. So just kind of recognizing that that question is, is definitely at the forefront and being worked on. And we'll have clarity here as Dr. Anderson mentioned, we have upcoming planning days. And that's really on during that, that time and that planning time to make sure that our model is, is clear for everybody involved and, and represents the best possible plan and direction for student, staff and families.
Director Johansson, if I could just add, because I, I'm sure that there, these questions are sitting out there. So I'll just get it out there quickly. Will there be opportunities for synchronous instruction? Yes. Will there be opportunities for students who are in need of additional support, perhaps even to come into the buildings? The answer is yes. But that looks like on a weekly or daily basis, we don't have that figured out yet, but it would not look like last spring, for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and we know at Wayzata, we do things methodically. We do things with, with deep thoughts and we know that children are always at the forefront. And then thanks, Dr. Johnson, for that added one. You understand, we all know this balance, right? Parents are trying to answer the question to their elementary students as we're saying, you know, now you're not going to go back to hybrid and that feels like a major heartbreak. At the same time, we, we certainly don't want to put you on the spot to answer questions before it's been thought out because we need our A game in this and, and I believe strongly that, that we're getting that in the time. So thank you for that. A second question that's taking place at dinner tables, I'm sure it shares at mine. And I've asked it before, but, and so I'm going to ask it again. There's lots of speculation about what happens now with the, with the sports, right? Our mental health of our students is, is paramount. And for a lot of students, being able to go to skate it off on the rink or, or swim some laps in the pools is just really key. We also know that that increases risk. Is there any more clarity about our access to basketball courts and hockey rinks and, and pools and the like as we make these changes?
I'll maybe start out with this one and I think Mr. Gangler, our high school principal is at the meeting tonight. He may have some perspectives from high school and high school league. I don't know if Mr. Sherwood has joined with us here tonight or not, but I may have to call on Scott to speak on his behalf. And then Jenny Ebert is here as well in regard to somebody who's closely connected to the youth sports programs kind of in regard to the facilities. And either John Deutsch or maybe Jim Westrum can maybe speak to our facilities and our protocols and process for cleaning and ensuring that, you know, after activities are done at a school, by the next morning when kids come back. You know, of course, that'll be changing now. That will continue those protocols to ensure that the facilities are in a good place. I think this is one of those areas where there's multiple subgroups. So we work at the high school level with the state high school league. MDH or M D E may weigh in on that and make determinations on behalf of the state high school league or they more likely will work closely together. There are less, there's less oversight probably from middle school and/or youth programs from the state high school league. But we have many wonderful youth organizations within the community that provide many of the sports. We do have some middle school sports as well and an activities director on each one of those buildings that oversee those programs. But I think it's, you know, it's one of those things, again, it's so many of these questions. I really wish I had really crisp, black and white answers for it. Just made it crystal clear. But it's really hard in a pandemic or in a time of all this uncertainty to find that, that perfect response that seems to, to hit right on the head of the question. So we're operating and navigating in a lot of gray area. I like, my personal style is to have a little more extended time to think things through deeply and carefully. And, you know, my brain just can't operate in this preferred mode right now. So, you know, every day is doing our best to try to figure things like this out. And I don't know that I can predict what that might look like in a week, let alone tomorrow probably. But, and likewise, it's hard to predict what it'll look like in January in regard to coming back to other learning models. But with that, I might just defer to Mr. Gangler to see if he would have any insights about high school sports and activities. And then Jenny, you may have some insight or maybe someone else is on the meeting that has a good insight in regard to the community programs. Scott, if you would.
Director Johansson, as Dr. Anderson indicates, it's a highly fluid situation. Activities Director Sherwood is actually at the football game in Burnsville tonight, which is why he's not on a board meeting here this evening. As of today, there is no anticipated changing, changes moving forward as correlates to Minnesota State High School League activities. We are in the process of wrapping up our second fall season and starting to, starting the process of getting ready for our winter season. As I mentioned though, this is highly fluid. As you know, the governor was on just the other day with some different parameters around gathering. And we're not quite sure how that will play into our activities. But we'll continue to monitor it closely and, and do everything we can to provide opportunities for our students to be able to participate in their, in their sports that they love.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to weigh in on the facility rental side of things, Director Johansson. So we have wonderful partnerships with our many youth associations that rent a wide variety of facilities within our school district. We've worked really closely with them over the summer and then again, now starting in October to have those organizations begin using our facilities. They've developed wonderful COVID-19 preparedness plans and have done a great job implementing them. So, you know, similar to what Mr. Gangler has said, we, we hope to be able to continue to run these programs. But the, the real honest answer is we, we don't know. We, we need to monitor. We need to look at this week by week. And if we can continue, I'm great. That's something that we would want to do in community. These are valuable partners and we know that sports and athletics and activities are important to all of our students and families. So if we can continue to do it safely, that would be our goal. But I, I don't have a definitive answer on what that would look like for the long term.
And Director Johansson, I'd be happy to talk about the safety of our facilities. You probably are aware that the district has made a significant improvement and investment in the air quality within our buildings. And we also have received carers funding and have enhanced cleaning protocols or bringing in additional fresh air. And we believe that our facilities would be able to handle that if it was appropriate.
Thank you. So my final is, is more of a statement because I've asked this question before. But I'm just going to put in a plug as, as Director Cohen did earlier. You know, the, I think one of the things that's weighing the heaviest on us is the impact on our students. And underscored to that is the impact on our achievement gap. I know that as we close buildings and families settle into a distance routine, they may not be interested in having their students come in. But there may be a group of students that don't fall within the EL or special education guidelines, but still need support from the interventionists or still need extra help. Our high school has seen success in this area in their modified hybrid. And I just really want to put in a plug for us to look at utilizing resources and working with buildings to, especially at the middle school level, but at the elementary too. If it's safe and if it's possible, bringing in our students that, that need that extra support and help and really making a commitment to providing opportunities and equity of experiences for our students. So I'm taking a lot of time. Thank you all for my, for listening and for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Sarah. Next, Chris McCullough, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thanks. I, I just have one question. All my board colleagues took all my other questions, which was really helpful. I have one and it's about the high school. So Mr. Gangler, I'll just put you on notice. I do want to make a couple introductory comments. First of all, as I did Monday night, I want to sincerely thank people who have sent in emails. We read them. We listen to what you're saying. We even watched a dog video, which is probably one of the most creative emails I've ever seen. So, so, so thank you for lightening things up for us today. Nobody wants to be in this situation. The trend lines don't look good. And as you heard Dr. Anderson say, there's, there's really no perfect model. There's not a one-size-fits-all. And, and there's a lot we don't know. We're, we're kind of working through this. You know, hopefully this is the last time. It's the first time, but hopefully it's the last time. So there's a lot we don't know, but I think one thing or a couple of things that we do know is that everybody in the administration and everybody in our schools is absolutely and keenly focused on the health and wellbeing of the students, teachers and families in the broader community. So I, I take a lot of comfort in knowing that. The other thing that I know for sure is that everybody's working incredibly hard, incredibly tirelessly. And I, and I looked at the folks on this call here and our administrators and our teachers and our families who are supporting the students. There's, there's a lot of hard work that goes into this. And so I think just a minute to pause and to thank everybody for that and to acknowledge that is, is important. So my one question is I want to preface it by saying that Principal Gangler and his team at the high school, I believe, have done an outstanding job in having this modified hybrid offering. And I said back in August, when we first looked at this board resolution, I said that having a building as big as the high school with that many students and staff and it made me very nervous at a 50% level, which is I think what was under consideration at the time. And so I think the modified hybrid has worked. The thing that makes me nervous going forward is as the COVID numbers are going up. And I look at the high school. I just, I want to know a little bit more about why we are comfortable safely and effectively operating that modified hybrid when in looking at the recommendations from MDH, the, the high school. the, the high schools, or I should say, kind of the, the seven through 12 grade level is, is generally recommended to be a distance learning model as the numbers go up. So um, Dr. Anderson or Principal Gangler, e- either one of you can respond to that. I'm, I'm mainly interested in knowing kind of the logic behind it. I don't doubt that it's working, but I'd like to hear a little bit more.
Thank you. I'll defer to uh, Mr. Gangler to respond to that question.
Thanks, Dr. Anderson. Director McCullough, great question and thank you for your continued support as we navigate through this pandemic at the high school. It was alluded to earlier, but beginning next week, uh, which is the start of term two, we will have approximately 400 students scheduled full, in full hybrid classes throughout each day. So most of these students have two or fewer classes during the day, so they're only in attendance for part of the day. So for example, a student might have a class first block, uh, then we provide time in the schedule for that student uh, to either participate in their distance class in the day and catch a bus home after second block, or they get a ride or they uh, drive themselves home, uh, so they can get home in time to start their second block. But on any given day, we will have approximately 400 students scheduled in those full hybrid courses. But again, that's throughout the entire day. It's not all here consistently, uh, all four blocks. Additionally, as you know, we're serving many of our students through uh, their special education services, our multilingual and English language learner students and other students who really do benefit from the additional supports that are here at school, uh, that they really don't have at home. As you know, we spent much of term one uh, scaling up in-person experiences for our students and we were rather successful in that work. However, over the past week, uh, with the increases in our local numbers, we spent a considerable amount of time trying to scale back some of those numbers. I'm being strategic about that. This is one of the benefits of the model that you proved back in August. We really can adjust on the fly and pivot rather seamlessly. So for example, some of our courses that were planning to be full hybrid term two, this might be some term courses that were scheduled term two and planning to be full hybrid. We've already scaled some of those back to the occasional hybrid courses, which will reduce the in-person experiences for those uh, classes. So again, we can scale up and scale down on the fly and it seems to be working rather quickly. Uh, rather successfully. But in short, on any given day, we will have less than 20% of our total population in the building over the course of an entire day. And at this time, uh, we do recommend that we stay the course and the modified hybrid, just how it was uh, designed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, Chris. Cheryl Polzin, any comments or questions?
Thank you. I, I don't have a lot because as Chris said, all of our colleagues have covered a lot of ground. So I really appreciate the conversation and all the hard work that's gone behind all of the answers that you're giving. Because I, I know how hard everybody is working, staff and administration are putting in 10 and 14 or more hour days and, and we just so appreciate everything that everyone is doing. I would like to echo um, my concern around the youngest learners and any opportunity that we have to bring, even if we do K2 or K3 in um, as soon as we possibly can do it safely. I'd also like to um, I guess, support consideration of flexibility for staff. It doesn't make sense to have them in the buildings if they can't even physically collaborate with their teams. If, if that provides some relief to give at least some of our staff flexibility where it makes sense to teach from a different location than their classroom and they can do it. You know, with fidelity and all of that. I think we should seriously look at that. I really appreciate the fact that you're gathering so much input from the instructors as to the best ways to deliver the distance learning. I think that many of them may have had surprises in, you know, the hybrid and having the smaller classes and the different types of connections that they make with their students that have been pleasant surprises. And if we can maintain um, kind of that, those different benefits, um, that would be great. But I do trust that everybody is, you know, applying their knowledge and expertise and is gonna land on, you know, the best way to deliver the best product to our students. So um, I think we all need to remember that, you know, if anyone needs support, the district is here, our community has lots of great supports. Reach out and um, find what you need because there's many people willing to help out whatever people are needing. This is such a stressful time for everyone. So um, let me see if there's anything else. I guess just thanks to everybody, the parents that are doing double duty at home and the students themselves that are trying to remain positive and flexible and trying to stay engaged and, and you know, doing the best job pro- possible under present circumstances. So I don't think I have any other specific questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Bonita Lucky, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I, I've listened to um, board colleagues talking for the most part, those questions that I, that I thought I had, they were answered. And the one question that I did have left, uh, Director McCullough asked that question just clarifying the um, why not go to uh, full distance learning for the high school? And I think I do want to ask um, Principal Gangler the question of um, feedback from the teachers, uh, what are they saying uh, with maintaining the modified hybrid learning? Do you have a good sense of how they're feeling about that?
Director Lucky, thank you for asking that uh, question. Yes. Overwhelmingly, uh, we are getting uh, positive support from our teachers and, and wanting to uh, move forward uh, in the model. Uh, I think um, it, it has uh,
Scott, you muted yourself.
I'm sorry. I don't know when I cut off, but I, I was saying that it was rather successful for us early in the school year when we were able to scale up our numbers. And uh, it's proving to be successful now when we need to scale back uh, some of our uh, in-person experiences for students. Uh, I'm sure there's mixed feelings to large staff, but overwhelmingly staff have been very, very supportive of um, of the model and, and the work that we're continuing to, to do and, and the program, programming that we're able to provide our students.
Thank you. And uh, I would just uh, reiterate uh, some of the sentiments that my colleagues have about teacher's choice. I do think is important as we think about uh, flexibility and um, them being able to make some choices and have flexibility. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Bonita. I'm last and um, I, I guess um, the main thing that I want to say is that I'm just, I'm so filled with, with gratitude for my board members' excellent questions, um, for the heartfelt stories that, that families are sharing with us about their experiences, for the emails and the feedback from our most excellent teachers, for administrators, all the hard work, planning. I just know everyone is working non-stop because we care about our district and our students and our families. So I think probably the best way for me to show my gratitude to you all is to uh, keep the meeting moving along, so I will. I just have a couple of comments and questions. I'll make it quick. First of all, I agree with um, what many of my colleagues have said about, I would love to see us getting our earliest learners back to some in-person learning when it is safe. Just thinking creatively and strategically about how that might be possible. I also want to um, thank um, Stacy Boss for her comments this evening and her reassurance that we're willing to compen- continue discussing the issue of flexibility um, for our teachers so they can work where they're able to do their very best job. I do have one question. Um, I think it might be for Jody Remsing, who I think is here, or maybe Chase. But um, Governor Walz um, provided some clarifications to his executive order, 2094 on Thursday. And um, it states that school districts must prioritize providing in-person instruction and services to students with disabilities whose individual education program calls for the intensive services that cannot be provided in a distance learning model. So I'm so pleased to know that Wazetta is already set up to provide those services. I think we've been doing a fantastic job with that, also for our um, English learner students as well. My question is, um, now that we'll be going to the distance learning, are there any opportunities to enhance some of the safety measures or protocols for our special education teachers and EL teachers who will still be working with students in the building? And actually, as I'm asking this question, I'm realizing that question could really apply to uh, our childcare workers who will continue to be with students in the buildings. Just wondering if there are any enhanced safety protocols that will be available now that we have a bit more space.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'll defer to uh, Jody Remsing, our Director of Special Services, and uh, let her share a few thoughts on that. Thanks, Jody.
Thank you for your questions regarding special services. Some of the things that we are hearing is that our, the cleanliness within our buildings is meeting our standards. Classes are clean, our sanitation is going well. Some of the things that we've really been looking at is, are we having community spread within our buildings? And what we're finding is that we aren't. We do have members of our staff and of our students that are testing positive, but they aren't um, getting that through community spread. So that's a really good thing. Looking ahead, we have been able to secure, set up some surgical masks that have additional protection to our staff members and students beyond what they would receive from our face masks and also the cloth masks that um, many of them are wearing. So there are some additional things that we can do. If our students are in distance learning for general education, it will also provide the opportunity for us to spread out greater in the building. It greater reduces the opportunity for community spread by having less students and staff on site. So there's a lot of things that we can do to really reduce and mitigate um, the risk. The last thing we want is for anything to happen to our wonderful um, staff that we value so much and for our students. So we will be um, looking at this um, and just implementing anything that we can think of to further mitigate that risk.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks, Jody. Okay, so I do not have further questions. Um, this is a really important vote this evening. I just want to give all board members one more opportunity. If any of these conversations sparked any further questions you'd like to ask before we take our vote, why don't you give me a wave if you have another question? Anyone? All right. All right. Seeing none. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. C N Faulkner.
No.
And uh, I'm sorry. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Andrea Keen.
Yes. All right. The motion carries. Um, thanks, everyone. That concludes our Wazetta Public Schools Emergency Board Meeting for November 11th, 2020. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move. This is Sarah.
Bonita Lucky, a second.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky, yes. Chris McCullough.
Yes.
C N Faulkner.
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes. All right. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye-bye. Thank you.